I'd like to call a special meeting to order at five thirty roll call please.
Mayor for Sec. D. Halba?
Here.
Mayor for Temp. Arcosta?
Present.
Councilmember Belisa Rodriguez?
Present.
Councilmember Jose Montano?
Here.
Member Ray Shelton? Councilmember Richard Arcosta?
Present.
City Manager Honorable Chief?
Present.
City Attorney Dennis Gibbons?
Present.
City Treasurer DeHans Martinez?
Here.
Thank you and for the record, um, Mayor, Councilmember Ray Shelton is present.
Thank you. Item number three, persons wishing to address the council in writing or verbally on any item not on the agenda. Do we have anyone? Item number four, Ward five candidate review. So, um, for this item, I will allow, I will ask Ms. Terry Dilman if Maria or Terry? Terry. Terry Dilman, um, will be interviewing you. Uh, we're gonna do this, um, like how it was done before the last time, which was public. Uh, we're gonna ask you questions. They're like a job interview. Um, we'll, we'll keep it, you know, respectful questions, professional questions. Um, but just, uh, in public because you are applying to be a public servant. So I think, uh, all these questions, uh, should be, um, cat in a casual setting, but at the same time, uh, visible to the public. So if you could just step up and, um, is, is there any questions from council in, uh, about Ms. Dilman?
No, but, um, if you just tell us a little bit about yourself, where you've lived, family, all those little things that let us and the city, the constituents get to know you a little bit.
Okay. My name is Terry Dilman. I grew up here in Douglas. I, um, uh, went off to Tucson, did my career and came back in two thousand and eight. I work for the Douglas Unified School District. I was in the business office and then now I am the migrant education program liaison and recruiter, and I also work with the McKinney Vento Program. Um, my family is a third generation Douglas native. Um, lot of family ties here. Uh, Douglas is my home. I, I left and came home and I want to be here to see Douglas grow and be part of what's happening for the future.
You mind if I ask how you heard about this opening?
I heard about it from several people. Um, like seven AM in the morning, people were asking me, did you hear and are you going to and please do and we would like you to and so that's why I did. And I was a write-in candidate last year, so I wanted to continue to try to be, be here, so.
Yes, Ms. Dilman, so, um, what is something unique that you can bring to our council?
Um, I feel that with my past background, especially in the business office at the district, I know about finance. Um, I know, uh, procurement, um, uh, accounting and just also I love to be part of the community and I do a lot of volunteer work. And I just started to feel like I needed to do more and I felt being on the council would help me do more and show maybe the public more that I was concerned for our, uh, for our community as a whole. So I feel that might be a unique quality for me and plus I've, you know, been in Douglas forever pretty much. Even though I was gone for a little while, I still, in my heart, this is me. This is home.
Um, what, what do you feel are, um, some of the biggest challenges that our community faces and how would you propose, uh, to, to change or, or better?
Well, the streets, but you know, that's gonna take time. Our, a lot of infrastructure needs help and that'll take some time. Um, I feel that if you bring it to my attention, I'll come and ask for guidance on how can we fix some of these things that are problems. Um, I do have some personal things that I hope we can change a little bit, but I feel everything takes time and, um, just collaborating as a whole, as a group will help get things done, so.
So, um, just.
I'm sorry, nervous. I'm sure you could tell.
It's okay. This is actually my first time at this, so I'm not, uh, but, um, so just to piggyback off your answer, um, you know, there might be times where we may not all agree as a whole. Um, but obviously there, there may be times that, um, you know, maybe members of the council may not agree on something. Um, what, what is your, um, take on that, on disagreements within?
I feel that we should talk about it, all, uh, agree to disagree sometimes. Um, but hopefully then come back for the good of the community, you know, and, um, and hope that we can get past all of that and see again what the outcome is gonna be, the end result. You know, so, but I hope, you all look like you all get along, so.
With you, with you. I, I, I think it's just in the society nowadays, we, um, sometimes don't agree on certain viewpoints, but it really should not be something that should keep us from working together.
Exactly, very much so.
So I appreciate your answer.
We need more kindness. We need more hu- you know, hu- humility, human touch. We need all of that because things aren't, things are a little ugly right now as far as that, so.
Thank you.
Yes, um, good afternoon, Ms. Dilman. Mine's very similar. I mean, you mentioned it. They, you know, we all get along and we're a great team and I think, uh, you'll be a great addition to our team. But I know you mentioned some of your things that you would like to bring to Douglas. What one specific goal do you have for beautiful city of Douglas?
Well, I did a leadership academy, uh, through the U of A extension and we had to have a community project. And I had thought really, really hard about it, but my heart is the vets and how we need to do more for them. And m- my heart is at the cemetery, so I would really like to see the cemetery be more beautified for the vets in showing a flag or, or some sort of commemorative for their service at the flat, at the cemetery. So that's kind of my, my heart right now is the veterans and how we tend to, you know, we, we forget they're out there and, and they need us and they don't know how to even start getting benefits or start doing the process to, to get help. And so I would hope maybe we can bring more projects that way to help a lot of our vets.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, one question I'll ask is, I mean, you've came to the meetings and that's one thing I respect about you. You ran, didn't go the way you planned, but you still came to the meetings. A lot of the times we get like, oh, if I don't win, I'll, and that, you know, and then they just don't want anything involved with government. But we've, uh, since you've been to these meetings, we have had constituents come to that podium and say, you need to make time for your constituents, whether it's town halls, whether it's going to different meetings, being a part of the community. Will you make time for those things? Will you make time to have town halls to talk to your constituents to see what they need? Will you be available, uh, to, you know, go to meetings, you know, uh, maybe during lunchtime when you, if you're still at work or afterwards? I know that, you know, a lot of the times we complain, well, complain, it's not a full, uh, uh, full-time job, but our constituents expect us that we should be knowing what we're gonna get ourselves into and treat it like a full-time job. Will you make time for that?
I will. I will make time for that because I already know that that's why we're here, is, is for our community and our constituents and the people of Douglas, so they need to see us out there.
Thank you. Anything else?
Mayor?
That's another thing.
Um, uh, thi- this is actually for Mr. Bondenaro. I know he's not here right now, but he, he resigned due to some medical issues. So I just wanted to thank him and his family for allowing him to, to serve with us and, uh, that, that we will keep him in our prayers.
Absolutely. Thank you. If there's no other, uh, so is there any discussion between the council? Item number five, possible decision on this. Discussion amongst ourselves on approvals. So item A, council member appointment for Ward five. May I have a motion to appoint Mrs. Terry Dilman for the Ward five seat?
Yeah.
Ms. Arcosta?
I move that Mayor and Council appoint Ms. Terry Dilman as council member for Ward five.
About a second?
Second.
Motion by, uh, Mayor Pro Temp Acosta, second by Councilmember Acosta. Roll call please.
The, I have information for public awareness on what this was.
Yeah, sure.
Going into.
Sure.
The roll call, thank you. Um, as you all know, as Ms. Rodriguez mentioned, um, Councilmember Bondenaro resigned his seat due to medical reasons and obviously the city of Douglas, uh, wishing well and, you know, thanks him for his leadership commitment and devotion to public service. Um, since there is a vacancy or was a vacancy in the council, uh, pursuant to Article two of the city charter, section thirteen B, whenever there is a vacancy in the council, the remaining councilmen, the mayor shall buy majority votes and a qualified person for the one which vacancy occurs, the vacancy in the council shall be, uh, filled within thirty-one days, but not less than fifteen days from the day of the vacancy. That's why, that's one of the reasons that we are moving very quickly on this. Um, to obviously appoint a council member to fill for the vacancy. Um, Councilmember Bondenaro resigned August twenty-second, April twenty-five immediately and is, is letter stated. Letters of interest were collected at the city clerk's office until five PM on Thursday, September fourth, resulting in the U.C. Ball One's admission. Mayor and council obviously scheduled a special meeting and that's an interview, uh, candidates in space, Ms. Dilman's. Um, Article two, section thirteen of the city charter states that if the vacated council seat has an access of two years remaining in its term, yet one councilman, or council member shall serve until the next election. After the election, elected council member will surrender their term created by the vacancy. Therefore, because we have an access of more than two years, we, or council member, uh, who may still remain, who are the major for twenty twenty-six, where we will have an election and any candidate, so may, even move beyond that age.
Thank you. So after that, roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montano?
Yes.
Councilmember Acosta?
Yes.
Mayor for Temp. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, motion passes and congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number six. No ma'am, keep standing, keep standing, because item number six, oath of office to the new council member.
Yes, ma'am. I? I, Terry Dilman, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of the council member for the city of Douglas, Arizona according to the best of my ability. So help me God, or so do I affirm.
So you're up here, you're official, and I just wanna say, I couldn't stop looking at your husband with the proud look he had this whole time. And I'm sure he's very proud. Uh, once you ca- I'll have you sit up here. I know it might be a little bit intimidating, but at least you can nudge me in case you have a question or concern. And item number seven, comments by the newly appointed councilman. It's all yours.
Um, I, I wanna thank everyone for having me here and allowing me to take this seat. And I just am excited for everything that's gonna happen to Douglas with the Newport. And I look forward to helping and assisting in any way possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight, adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Rodriguez.
I move to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion by, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez, second by Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp, uh, Acosta. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to call this regular meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation by Reverend Jose Juan Bernal from Saint Stephen's Episcopal Church.
My allegiance is to the flag, in the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, created in a just cause for all.
Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send out upon those who hold office in this state of Arizona in Cochise County, and in a very, very special way to the City Council of the City of Douglas, send out the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Could you tell us a bit about your ministry and your church?
I'm sorry?
Could you tell us a bit more about your ministry and your church and the event that I've been, I've gone twice to where you have it first, the first Saturday of every month?
Thank you very much. Well, my full name is Jose Juan Bernal, also known as JJ. I'm the priest, pastor, person in charge of Saint Stephen Episcopal Church since about two years. I came October 2023. We are redeveloped the schematics to present to the insurance. I think everything will be okay. First, God. We might just start in January or February 2026. So we have to adjust some ideas according to insurance and nothing big, nothing problematic. We will do it. And one of the things what we are doing in the first Saturday of the month, we, we have what we call community lunch and conversation, which is open to everybody. All the people who are able to eat are invited. It's free. We don't have any specific topic, no political, no religious. You are the topic. The people who are present is the topic. We want to, to have these enhanced relations with the community and we are having between fifteen to twenty-seven, thirty people. And we have such a good food, so you're more than invited to come any first, first Saturday of the month. The next will be October 4th, which is also the day of Saint Francis of Assisi. I'm glad to be here. My first time in the City Council. I'm here to serve the community. So in any other ways that I might serve, just let me know. You know, the city has my information, or you might come back to the parish, Saint Stephen's. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll vouch that all the food that they serve there is really, really good. That's why I went back and I had my chat with the mayor there, so I appreciate it. Item number four, roll call, please.
Mayor Prosegri Calpa?
Here.
Mayor Protemp, Melania Acosta?
Present.
Councilmember Melissa Rodriguez?
Present.
Councilmember Jose Montaño?
Here.
Councilmember Ray Shelton? Councilmember Terry Gilman?
Here.
Councilmember Richard Acosta?
Present.
City Manager Honorable People?
Present.
City Attorney Dennis Stevens?
Present.
Mr. Richard Alejandro Martinez?
Here.
Thank them, Mr. Mayor, for the record, and Councilmember Ray Shelton, please.
Having a vacation and we hope he's doing well, having fun. Item number five, events update.
Hey Douglas, we've got some exciting events coming your way this fall, so let's dive right in. First up, don't miss the Mexican baseball fiesta happening October 1st, 2025 at the Copper King Stadium. Tickets are on sale now, online only. Please note, there will be no physical copies sold. Box seats are just twenty dollars and general admission is only fifteen dollars. If you have any questions, give us a call. We're more than happy to help. Then, this Saturday, join us for Una Noche de Mariachi at the Raul Castro 10th Street Park from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Enjoy an evening filled with live mariachi music, great vibes, and community fun. Be sure to review the flyer for full details. And looking ahead, save the date for our annual Halloween trunk or treat. This year, we're presenting Hawkins Chronicles, a spooky twist you won't want to miss. Stay tuned to our Facebook page and the city calendar for more information coming soon. So grab your tickets, bring your family, and join us for all these amazing events. We'll see you there.
Keep the fun going all year long. Join us at the City of Douglas Aquatic Center for our Fall and Winter Aquatics Programs. Our Water Aerobics Program will continue into the month of September. Missed the first week? No problem. Scan the QR code to take a look at our flexible payment plans. The City of Douglas Aquatic Center will be hosting another session of swim lessons this November. Stay on the lookout for afternoon swim lesson registration that will open on November 3rd, 2025. Join us, if you dare, for a haunted night at the Eighth Street Pool. Bring a floaty to relax in the water or curl up poolside as we show the chilling horror film Insidious on October 11th, 2025. Don't miss out on some family fun during our open swim hours at the Douglas Municipal Pool from 1:00 to 5:00 PM on Saturday and Sunday. If exercise is what you're looking for, join us at the Aquatic Center for lap swim Monday through Friday from 5:00 to 8:00 in the morning and 6:30 to 8:00 in the afternoon. Lap swim is also available on Saturdays from 7:00 to 10:00 in the morning. We hope to see you make a splash at our City of Douglas pools.
Hello, this is what's happening at the Douglas Public Library in the month of September. Mondays, we have relaxing activities like puzzles, arts and crafts, coloring, and that is for all ages from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Tuesdays, we have steam club, which is science experiments, coding robots, snack making, learning about money and budgeting, and we will also be celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. And that is at 3:30 PM for kids ages six and up. Wednesdays, we have movies with free popcorn and juice, and that is at 3:00 PM. We will be showing Lido and Stitch, the new one. We will be showing Encanto. We will be showing the Mario Brothers movies, so make sure you join us for that. Thursdays, we have storytime, and we sing, we dance, we read books, of course, and we also have playtime afterwards. And that is at 11:00 AM, and for kids who are not in school yet, usually five and under. And we are also celebrating the start of fall with our Fall Paint Night. You can come paint with us on the 19th of this month at 5:00 PM. You can call or visit the library to register, and there is our Fall Paint Night for adults, all materials included, and some refreshments will be served. We hope you join us this month. It is also Library Card Sign Up Month. So kids who sign up for their first library card will get a prize just to celebrate. We hope to see you here at the library in September. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Item number six, Mayor and Councilmember updates and/or reports. Anyone from council?
Mayor?
Mr. Acosta?
I just want to take this opportunity to just, uh, that my constituents of Ward 6 and all City of Douglas, I'll be having a Q and A on September 20th at the Douglas Outsource from 10:00 to 11:00, so, you know, just to all Ward 6 here, but also invited. I also want to take this opportunity just to let you know that our library is voted number one for customer service and number one for nonprofit and the best of Douglas annual Cochise County Awards. So, yay, congratulations to our amazing library. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta.
Mayor?
Mr. Montaño?
Uh, yeah, I just want to take this opportunity to thank all the staff with the City of Douglas that had anything to do with that groundbreaking ceremony. It truly was an amazing event. So I just wanted to thank everybody, and it actually, it made Douglas look good. And then also thank you for the Ministerio de Tierra de Bendición for their facility, which is an amazing place also. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montaño. Anyone else?
Mayor? Uh, so I completely agree with Mr. Montaño. The event was a huge success. Thank you to all city staff once again for putting on such a tremendous event. And also I want to give thank you to Mrs. Ujquiho and Mr. Pedrosa for all their work with the Port of Entry project, and, um, I'm just super excited for these next few years as the project goes underway. In addition, um, I will also be planning a meet and greet with my constituents of Ward 1. A date to be determined. I'm looking at early, uh, October. So please be on the lookout for, uh, the flyer regarding, uh, the meet and greet. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protemp?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just, uh, kind of recapping last month, um, last month, we attended the, um, uh, Arizona League of Cities and Towns Conference, yearly conference, um, highly successful. Um, thank you too, Mr. Mayor, for presenting the resolution on, um, on absentee ownerisms, uh, specifically to historic properties. Um, and that seems to be moving forward, uh, through the legislative process that the Arizona League of Cities and Towns has with their attorneys. Um, so hopefully we, we will become more, um, aware of what the next steps are with that, but it, it, the goal of that is to turn it into legislation. Um, so that was, I think, the highlight for me of the Arizona League's, uh, of Cities and Towns Conference. And, um, as, uh, most of you may be aware, um, I was not in attendance to the groundbreaking as much as I wanted to be there. Um, I'm part of the Flynn Brown Civic Leadership Academy, which is a, um, very selective process to get into. And I made that commitment to, to go to every single of their classes, um, because there are a lot of, it is a competitive process, so I, I could not be here, uh, physically, but I was here in spirit and everything that I've heard was that it was a great success and that Mayor did a great job as an MC, so, um, thank you everybody, and that's my.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm very glad though I said I could do it, you know, why pay somebody to be an MC and then that was the first time I ever did it, so I appreciate that. Um, I'll start with the League of Cities and Towns. Like Mayor Protemp said, it was, it was, um, very successful. I know that our constituents sometimes think you're gonna go out there, you're gonna go party, but it's about sessions, and this year I had the opportunity to, to be part of a panel, and it was titled Partnering for Progress: Small Town Strategies for Economic Development. Um, it was, uh, moderated by Mila Besic, Besic, uh, I know I butchered her last name. She's the town, uh, mayor of the town of Superior. Um, it was also, uh, Bertie Cano, uh, the mayor of the town, Cano, but thank you, the town of Winslow, and also Keith Watkins, who's the Senior Vice President of the Rural Economic Development Arizona Commerce Authority. And that's why it's important to be part of these networking opportunities, because when I mentioned, hey, we have uh, buildings that are vacant, we need, you know, businesses to come, he says, send me the list, and then I'll send you the list of everybody that wants to go there, because he gets daily messages of we need somewhere to put this business, or we need to set up shops, uh, elsewhere. Uh, so, and also we got a lot of feedback from smaller towns saying, what are you guys doing? You guys are getting a lot of attention now. Uh, what, uh, you know, what's your, um, what's your thought process? What, you know, what are you doing to market? So it was very, it was a great experience. Um, I mentioned chat with the mayor uh, at the, uh, Episcopal Church. The one thing I do want to say is best cheesecake I've ever had. So if you're gonna go, and you're gonna go to the, make sure he brings a cheesecake though. It was very delicious, but against the conversation. Um, the architect was there for their, for the building. We had a discussion. Um, we, and I mean, it was basically promoting Douglas. A lot of people that go there that haven't been there for a while. I mean, that's why it's also important to go to these events as city representatives, because you can sell your city to them. It's not just, you know, a small town, but look at our culture, look at our special events. Uh, so I, I'm very thankful for that opportunity to have it there, and then the next night you had an orchestra there that I was invited to, and that was an experience to have there. It was, it was very unique, you know, when, when, again, when these events come up, I, uh, implore a, all the public to go to these, uh, and enjoy them. Um, a- as was mentioned, the groundbreaking ceremony. I don't think, I mean, we can say great job, but to go into detail the night before, our staff was still working like at 9:00 PM. Because we had a pivot from one place to the other, they were working hard. There were people who said, you know, you had another location, we didn't even notice because of how well your staff, you know, planned everything out, so we're very thankful. Like I tell people, our staff makes us look good, because there's no way, with all due respect to council, we could have done that on our own over there. Uh, it was, it was the hard work of our staff that really was getting all the name tags, getting all, you know, the, 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 the vendors there, uh, getting, uh, the seats ready, getting everything, so uh, we're very appreciative of, of them, and I think we need to show them our, our gratification. We need, we need to thank them in some way. Uh, but you know, they work very hard. Um, also, I want to thank Mrs. Rodriguez, because the whole setup there for the football game was, uh, with her help. I also want to thank Senator Mark Kelly. He was the only, uh, one out of the, you know, the two senators and the governor that came. Not only did he come, but he spent the day here. He had, uh, an event at Zilantros, uh, he went to Tilted Luck to talk to local businesses, and then he went and stayed for the game, did the coin flip. I don't think we've ever had that with a city senator. So that brought attention to Douglas. We, not only did it bring attention to Douglas, but it, we built a closer relationship with him, and, and that's what it's all about. Uh, a lot of politicians say, you know, they'll send you something or the virtual call, whatever it might be. He actually came down here, so we should be very appreciative of him and his support. Uh, we also had a mayor, uh, Sonora Mayor's meeting in Nacosari de Garcia. Um, and as far as, uh, you know, to council, expect six, uh, sister city agreements. Because Gananea wants to, wants to do one, we're already sister cities with Nacosari, and the rest of them want to do that too. I was telling them, it, it doesn't take a lot of money to do that. It just takes a partnership. Sometimes, you know, it's, it's, uh, doing an event somewhere, promoting them, but we want them to be promoting Douglas with tourism and with their, uh, with their trade and, you know, anything that goes by there, so uh, be ready for some communication with that, uh, so we could get that port of entry, uh, utilized. I mean, it's not gonna be the savior of the town if we don't use, utilize it to its full potential. Uh, I will, I will also have, uh, chat with the mayor in the evening, I think, uh, later in the month, and I'll keep you all updated on that. Uh, and that's it for me. Ms. Gilman, do you have any, any reports or anything for the last thirty minutes?
Actually, yes, I do.
Oh, wow.
I had the pleasure of going to the open house for the University of Arizona Extension Program today, and it was amazing. They have wonderful programs. They want to be here in Cochise County and in Douglas especially, and they have a lot of programs to offer the schools, and we need to take advantage of that. I was very impressed with their programs. Thank you for what they did today.
Thank you. And you know, I was there today too. I saw you there today. So I remember everything that I did this past month with the exception of what I did today. So thank you for that.
I'm, I'm sorry. I just, um, just something that I really wanted to address, and, um, I, I, I think it's in one way or another impacted all of us with the news, um, today of, you know, shootings going on, stabbings going on. The only thing I wanted to just really express with that is that, um, you know, like when we were interviewing, um, Mrs. Gilman, and we talked about differences. Our differences should not be something that completely, um, separates us. Um, we should all remember, at the end of the day, we all go home to family. And we're all people, regardless of what our views are.
And we're all people regardless of what our views are. And um, we need to do it as a community and and hopefully start a. Trend of being able to accept each other and show that we can work um together even with our differences. Um, it's a scary place um right now in the country with everything that we're seeing, especially for our children. But because they're watching this, we should um set the example that um there is no tolerance for hate in any. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we can all agree up here that our main goal is to advance Douglas, to help it grow. So everybody could stay here, we could build it up. So we may disagree at times. But I think the our our heart is in our city and and our love is in our city and our constituents, so thank you. Great point. Item number seven, proclamations. This is for mesothelioma awareness day. Whereas mesothelioma is an aggressive and incurable cancer that affects the linings of the lungs, abdomen, or other organs. And whereas mesothelioma is most often associated with exposure to asbestos. And whereas asbestos was heavily used in the military, shipbuilding, manufacturing. Industry and construction of virtually all office buildings, public schools, and homes built before nineteen eighty. And has been recognized as the worst oc- as the worst occupational health disaster in U S history. And whereas asbestos continues to be present in such structures to this day. And whereas there is no safe level of asbestos exposure, one fiber at one time can be enough to cause mesothelioma. And whereas because of occupational, military-related, military-related household or incidental exposure. And and the latency of this disease raging from ten to fifty years between exposure and disease development. Tens of millions of Americans are now at risk for developing mesothelioma, including first responders from ground zero in New York City. On and after September eleventh, two thousand and one, and whereas the five-year survival rate is only twelve percent. And whereas the Mesothelioma Applied Research Foundation was formed to eradicate the life-ending and vicious effects of mesothelioma. And progress is finally being made in developing effective effective treatment for the disease. And whereas Mesothelioma Awareness Day would raise public awareness of the disease and of the need to develop effective treatments for it. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Josegri Haga Mayor, and on behalf of the City of Douglas Council. Do hereby proclaim September twenty-six, twenty twenty-five to be Mesothelioma Awareness Day and witness, oh. Uh, and I also wanted to say uh thank. Uh Karen Cox, who's the wife of the Bisbee uh Chief Tim Cox. Who has been advocating for this proclamation. We have the proclamation we'll deliver to you. But uh, on behalf of myself and council, we want to thank you uh for your advocacy on this, because I think it's something we don't think a lot about. But it's something that needs to come to the public's attention. So thank you for your advocacy and for your service to the community. Uh, oh, I have another proclamation and I closed my my binder. The next proclamation is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence violence is a prevalent public health problem. Affecting all communities regardless of age, race, gender, socioeconomic status. Religion, nationality, or sexual orientation. And whereas more than ten million adults experience domestic violence annually in the United States, according to a survey conducted by the National. Intimate Partner and Sexual Violence Survey. And whereas domestic violence is a pattern of coercive control and abusive behaviors in any intimate or fam-. Or fami- familial familial. A relationship that are used to gain and maintain power and control over another. Whereas domestic violence is the leading cause of injury to women between the ages of fifteen to forty-four. And whereas one in four women and one in ten men experience experience emotional abuse, isolation, economic abuse. Use uh using children, tech abuse, sexual coercion. And whereas between two thousand and nine and twenty twenty-three in Arizona, one thousand five hundred forty-three people. Lost their lives due to domestic violence, according to the Arizona Coalition to End Sexual and Domestic Violence. And whereas by promoting health, healthy, respectful, and nonviolent relationships, communities can help reduce. The occurrence of intimate partner violence and prevent the harmful and long-lasting effects. Of inten- uh intimate partner violence on individuals, families, and communities. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month provides the opportunity to enhance education. Prevention and intervention efforts around domestic violence and support organizations that provide advocacy effort service. Efforts, services, and assistance to victims. Now let it be resolved that I, Josegri Haga Mayor, and on behalf of the City of Douglas Council. Do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty-five to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And as the proclamation uh listed, it not only affects women, but affects men, and we have to remember that a lot of these women and men. They were sons, daughters, or are sons and daughters. They are parents, they are siblings. So we are our brother's keeper. If we see something, let's say something and protect each other and our community. Thank you. Next item, item eight. Persons wishing to address the council in writing or verbally on any item not on the agenda. Our first speaker, Eric Braverman.
Yep, hello, gang. Uh, Last Supper Museum curator, E B. You call me, call me E B. And uh, I just want to let you know, we're going through an expansion. We're gonna have a thousand Last Suppers up, and we're gonna get so much positive press, we choking on it. We're gonna have a press book this thick. Also, London Film School coming to Douglas next month. With a six-man crew for two and a half weeks, making a movie about the Last Supper Museum and Douglas. It's gonna go to film festivals all over the world, and it's a principal part of their curriculum, as at the end, you make a movie. So these kids in London decided to come and make a movie about the Last Supper Museum. The expansion is gonna be done real soon, and I want any of you that haven't been in to please come in. I'm there every day except Monday. Um, I'd also, just like on the record, I'm very glad to see Dilman in here. Real glad, and I'd like to thank pub- publicly Mike Baldinagro. Who was a really big supporter of the museum for a long time, and in in many multiple ways. So we're gonna expect the same support out of you. And uh. You know, he's having a hard time. Matter of fact, I think it has something to do with asbestos type of things and all that, because that's what he did in the Navy. He's a veteran, firefighting experiments in the Navy. And his picture on G Avenue is right across the street from our museum, so I see that every day, all day. So um, yeah, what the councilwoman said was real important, about not hating on each other. It used to be fun to argue. About politics, now it's just a mess. So it's a really important message. Thank you very much. And all you do, I know you're not making a bunch of dough being here tonight. So consider our little proposal in there. And we're gonna do ten times the value. Questions?
There there's no discussion during uh.
I'm sorry. That's why you're up there and I'm down here.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Alex Boneo.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and um community members, thank you for allowing me to talk. My name is Alex Boneo. And this afternoon, I'm representing um Arizona Border Alliance. Arizona Border Alliance is a local nonprofit um that it's dedicated. To increase the the access to essential resources and support initiatives that promote opportunity, strengthen community connections. And foster sustainable development. We're here definitely to, number one, connect and promote all the existing resources that we have. We do believe that the main problem that we have in Douglas, it's not that we don't have things, it's that we just don't know about them. So we're in a mission to unite the community, to promote the resources, and to make our Douglas a better place to live. Um, definitely, we want to stay here. We want to serve the community. We have applied for some community funds that are later on the agenda, so just ahead of time, I just want to give you. The thanks for considering supporting this local agency. We're here to stay. And we're gonna do the work. We can do it way better with a little bit of money, but we're here to to help out. At another time, I would like to come back and give you more details about everything we've done. It's only been a year. But I've been doing community work for the last twenty years, so I'm just very invested in the community and very committed to this project. And again, thank you for the opportunity. Have a good night.
Thank you. And anytime you want to do a presentation, you're always invited. Um, I'd like to actually call someone up here. Um, I they they didn't do a call to the public, but I um to introduce himself. Dominic Curran. Tell us about yourself, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Man- uh Graha and uh council. Uh, my name is Dominic Curran, as stated. Uh, I moved here five weeks ago. Uh, with the City of Douglas as the Golf Course Superintendent. I was born in Phoenix, graduated from high school in Tucson at C D O, and then went to college at Western New Mexico University. I've been in the golf business since, so that's twenty-five years now. Um, looking forward to completing this project that you guys have. Put a big amount of money into and want to make it right for the City of Douglas. Um, I also want to extend my appreciation for the open arms that. The community, the City of Douglas employees, and everybody that's given me. And uh looking forward to uh achieving all the goals that the council wants and uh our city manager wants, so. Do you have any other questions?
Well, there's no discussion during uh part of the public, but we appreciate uh your your um work. I know, your first day here, I think that's when I met you, and you were really excited when you were doing your orientation, right? So you're very knowledgeable, and we appreciate that. We're very excited to get that going, because that's gonna be a huge amenity for our community now that we're grown, so thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Item number nine, item number nine, discussion decision on on approval of consent agenda consent agenda items. Item eight expenditures for the month of August twenty twenty-five totaling three million three hundred eighty-nine thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. Item beam meeting minutes for August twenty twenty-five. Item C contract award for purchasing card services. Item D bid award for the West Douglas Utilities Expansion S R eighty. Item E, community funding request. Item F, Resolution two five dash one six nine one, a resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Douglas, Cochise County, Arizona. Approving and adopting the State of Arizona Conflict of Interest statutes as the city's conflict of interest policy. In a conflict of interest disclosure form produced by all city employees and officials. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Here.
Mayor Protemp Acosta.
I I make motion leave consent agenda items.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by uh Mayor Protemp Acosta. Uh, se- uh second by council member Rodriguez. I'm gonna say it goes to all of every time I look to my left. Sorry about that. So when you asked if it was gonna stay like this, probably not. Uh, any discussion? If none, roll pop please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, motion passes. Congratulations on your first vote.
Yay.
Gets easier, no worries. Uh, item ten, discussion decision on approvals. Second reading of ordinance number two five dash one two one six, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Douglas, Cochise County, Arizona. Amending chapter eight tw- eight point two eight of the Douglas Municipal Code. Specifically as to section eight point two eight point zero four zero F relating to the construction-related noise. Establishing separability of components of ordinance and establishing an effective date thereof. Chief Holden.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, Senate Bill eleven eighty-two was signed by Governor Hobbs by emergency on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. And codified under Arizona Revised Statute nine dash five hundred point five two. This bill restricts municipality from enacting or enforcing any noise ordinance that prohibits general construction. Uh, activities between May first and October fifteenth of each year. Between the hours of five A M and seven P M each business day, seven A M and seven P M on Saturday. As long as the construction work is being performed under a valid permit issued by the municipality. Um, additionally, the municipality must allow concrete to be poured at least one hour before the time. Uh, general construction activities are regularly scheduled to begin. Staff is recommending that Article eight point two eight zero four zero, paragraph F, be stricken in its entirety. And replaced as noticed in the draft atta- the draft ordinance attached.
Thank you, chief. May I have a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance two five dash one two one six?
Mayor.
Mrs. Rodriguez.
I move that the mayor and council approve the second reading of ordinance number two five dash one two one six by number and title only.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by mid- uh council member Rodriguez, second by Mayor Protemp Acosta. Any discussion? And this is basically for the safety of the workers before it gets, you mentioned the season where it gets really hot, so. Uh, that's why they did that, so thank you, chief. No discussion? Roll coffins.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Item number eleven, presentation discussion. Item A code enforcement statistics and processes. Ms. Gonzalez?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This presentation is brought to you today at the request made by Mayor Graha. At the August thirteen, twenty twenty-five meeting. So in January eighth, twenty twenty-five, um. Did a presentation also at the request of Mayor and Council on alleys. Um, the presentation focused on challenges and current state at the time of alley cleanups in the city. Um, we have provided public education information. We also recorded a video. To make the public aware that alleys and adjacent right-of-ways to their properties are their responsibility to maintain. And we also presented partial data for twenty twenty-four, since we had just hired our blight crew. Composed of three gentlemen. And we had information for April through December of that year. And we also received input from Mayor and Council on moving forward with alleys. So for code enforcement, we fall under Douglas Municipal Code, Chapter eight point three two. Which defines nuisances, litter, abandoned or junk vehicles. It provides the purpose and the scope and also allows for enforcement activities. Um, for people who are in violation to those codes. So our current enforcement data is. We are continuing our ongoing efforts with enforcement and education. Um, we have marketed informational videos to the public, and we have ongoing verbal and written education to property owners. Of their responsibilities outlined in our municipal code under Chapter eight point three two. Our goal is to obtain voluntary compliance to avoid violation notices and citations. One of the biggest challenges to our code enforcement efforts is absentee and or deceased owners. Um, there's many vacant or abandoned buildings. And or parcels, and some of them are being used by homeless people or squatters, most often without utility services. Which leads to accumulation of trash trash debris and junk. So our current data is we continue to have challenges with property owners maintaining their alleys on the adjacent right-of-ways. The expectation that we're hearing from the public is that the city will maintain. Uh, we receive complaints and requests for alley and adjacent right-of-way cleanups. Um, very often, I think that's our most often complained about violation. There's also quite a bit of illegal dumping occurring in vacant parcels and or abandoned properties. The challenge in enforcement is it's difficult to assign responsibility for the dumping. And the city ends up assuming the cost of cleanup and trash disposal. So far this year, from January to July, um, didn't include August stats, because the presentation was prepared in advance of the end of the month. We had issued up until July thirty-first, a hundred and sixty-two violation notices. Sixteen working without building permits, five citations. Seventy-eight alleys have been cleaned up by our blight crew. We've had two hundred and forty-six contacts for voluntary compliance to avoid issuing violations or citations. We've had seventy-nine right-of-way ditch and graffiti cleanups. And a hundred and ninety-five vehicle tow stickers have been placed on junk or abandoned vehicles. So our community service officer who works out of the Douglas Police Department also helps with enforcement efforts. And the statistics that they provided for the community service officer are a hundred and ninety-five. Vehicle tow stickers. Um, they've responded to two burglaries and. Um, they've responded to two burglaries and tr- and thefts. They've had eight traffic accidents reported through July. Eight vehicles have been towed by the community service officers, um enforcement actions. They've issued fifty-one parking violations. There's been six criminal damage reports taken and they've provided thirty escorts. So our code enforcement process, um we try to make contact with the property owner, tenant uh to make them aware of the violation. We allow them reasonable time for voluntary compliance. If voluntary compliance is not met, then we send a violation notice. And then if they still don't meet, they don't eliminate the violation or abate it, then we issue a citation. And that gets issued through with the assistance of the justice court. They give us a date to schedule a hearing and we issue the citation notices. And then if we have to, um if the viol- violation persists and abatement is not attained, then we meet internally to determine whether to begin the abatement process on the property. So the abatement process after court citation falls under Douglas Municipal Code eight point three two point three one zero. After we decide to abate, there's many factors that are considered, obviously, cost, value of property, are there other liens on the property? We have to pull title reports. Then we assess the report to ensure that abatement is in the best interest of the city. We prepare the abatement notice to the property owner, which includes the list of all existing violations. The notice is sent by certified mail. If there's still no response or compliance, then we post the thirty-day abatement notice on the property and provide courtesy notification to neighboring properties. Once the um thirty-day notice is posted and mailed to the property owner, the owner has fifteen days to request a hearing to appeal our decision to abate. If the appeal is requested, obviously the time gets suspended, but we do have to schedule or pro- provide a response within seven days that we will schedule a hearing. If the appeal is not requested, we proceed with the abatement when the thirty days are up. Uh, we code enforcement coordinates with Public Works and the Blight Abatement Crew for the abatement if necessary. Uh, we have shared use of equipment and staff. And then once the abatement is completed, we do uh an accounting of all the, the costs for the abatement, which we then file with the Cochise County, County Recorder's Office. It's a notice of claim and lien on the property. I forgot to mention that we also do have an emergency abatement process, which follows a little bit of a different process and that can be found in Municipal Code eight point three two point three zero zero. I'll entertain any questions.
So the, the goal is not to get to that abatement process, right? The goal is to get to buy. Um, are you finding it very difficult to get people to apply? Because obviously that's a very like process and has passed yet for this to to, to go in there and clean up.
Actually, we're not finding it difficult. As you can see from this slide, we've had two hundred and forty, forty-six verbal contacts. Only five citations have been issued.
And so back to like the alleyway cleanup, I know that that's highly uh debated, I guess, amongst property owners. Um, is there anything, any ideas or anything that um we can try to implement, try to get some clients with that? Um, you know, should the city go in and try to clean up so much of that as possible? Kind of upkeep on it? I mean, it's just, I'm not sure that the I, I, I fear that it's too costly for the city to do that, right? So what can we do um as council or to get our constituents to comply with this and understand that it's their responsibility?
Um, we're working across departments to try to get to where we're able to clean more alleys. Like I said, the hiring of the blight crew in twenty twenty-four has helped considerably with that. Um, when I did the presentation in January of this year, the goal was to clean a hundred alleys. We determined that there's approximately four hundred alleys within the city. And our goal is to clean a hundred alleys every year, so it would be on a four-year cycle rotation. Again, continuing the public education component, um doing the in-person visits and talking to the property owners or tenants and making them aware of the Douglas Municipal Code. A lot of people surprisingly still tell us, and many of these people are lifelong Douglas residents, that they don't know that it's their responsibility to clean. And so we just have to do a better um education campaign. Um, we're gonna be sending annual reminders. And then um I know city manager had man- mentioned working internally with other staff like during off-seasons to assist with the abatement.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to add also that if you recall with a hundred um alleys that we recommended accomplishing, you know, for cleanup, we also said that seasonally we would spray so that over time when we do the next set of a hundred, uh we would follow up with spraying as well. And the goal is to over time have uh the weed more under control sterilized so that uh it minimizes greatly during monsoon season. Some of those weeds exceed six feet and you can't even get through some of that brush. So as we also get out there and do the spraying and budgeting for that, I, I think you'll start seeing that reduction over time because the goal is to try and um make those alleys sterile from a, at least the weed perspective. We still have to work on the informative and making sure that the constituency knows that. You know, if there's a refrigerator that's thrown out there or a couch that's thrown out there, uh there are special calls and pickups that we can do for a, a nominal fee. But the key is to not have those things thrown out there to begin with. So it's a holistic effort and I think over time we'll continue to be able to report progress.
If, if I may, um I just think it's as council, we should be part of that effort in trying to um spread that message too. So I'm not sure, you know, what each of us can do, but I think, you know, I know what I can try to do and then see and hopefully that the collective can all make a difference in that because it is, it shouldn't be um city's responsibility. Us as property owners as, you know, that is the condition that our alleyways are part of our um responsibility as property owners and we need to um hold ourselves accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. The comments, questions?
I have questions.
Mr. Montano?
Is the, the community service officer, is that the only person that is in charge of doing this?
No, we have on staff, we have two code enforcement positions. One of them is limited status, also hired at the beginning of last year. However, due to our staffing challenges, um the title is actually code enforcement slash planning and zoning technician. So they also help with inspections with our building inspector and um doing a lot of that. And then one of our code enforcement officers has recently taking on, taken on right-of-way permitting since we lost the staff member that used to handle those. So we're actually working with about one code enforcement offer, officer plus the community service officer.
Uh, another, another question. Does the Douglas Code cover junk vehicles in front yards? Because there's plenty of those around town.
Mayor, Councilmember Montano, I believe it does. Uh, it, it refers to it as blight. Um, if junk vehicles are on private property and out of the right-of-way, we have challenges with that because they're on their personal property. Our code does address how much of the front yard can be used as improved parking spaces. Um, it can't be any more than fifty percent of the front yard of a home. And it's difficult and challenging with our code because it is old and outdated to enforce having people removed junk vehicles when they're not taking up more than the fifty percent of their front yards.
Thank you.
Any other question? I know that weeds were mentioned, but I'll, I'll be honest on the reasoning why I, I won uh this presentation up because I usually go through Fourteenth Street. And I've noticed that especially in front of schools and between First, uh Fourteenth Street, between A Avenue and Bonita, there's a house with trash bags just in the front yard. And then, and, and I sent a, I, that's what I was looking at when I, when I sent the complaint. It was August, uh the twelfth of August, so it's almost gonna be a month. In the driveway, there's trash. In the backyard, it's just the weeds are basically trees. And this has been a month. So I, you know, seeing that and then we're gonna get people to come over here and say, well, I wonder how our schools are. But it's passing through us, well, that's where, where it is. And also there was a complaint on no, that I, I forgot when I said that complaint, but the complaint on August tenth, now that I've seen, August twelfth, sorry, was it was on Eleventh Street uh between, or no, Twelfth Street between D and E. There was a truck on the sidewalk. So the first thing I think about, well, I have to go on the road on the street now. But if I was in a wheelchair, now we're forcing disabled people to go from the sidewalk down the driveway and around and putting them in danger. So I think we need to, I mean, it's, it's little things like that where we could tell them, you're not supposed to be parked on the sidewalk. You're not supposed to have your ATV on the sidewalk, not supposed to have trash bags on the sidewalk. And then I've, I've gotten very much concerns about the trash bags just because of the West Nile. Oh, you're bringing those mosquitoes if they're wet, you know? So I mean, it's, it's things like that. Like I, I get the weeds, but when we see obvious things, I think we should be moving on them. If we have to contract somebody out, you know, they don't have to be an employee, but maybe limited status where they just drive around and see those obvious things uh to report them. Uh, I, 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 I would be all for it. I don't know about council, maybe administration can see into that, but it's the trash bags in the front yard. It's the dri- parking in the sidewalk that especially during in front of the, uh, close to the schools. That's what I've noticed. A lot of these things, you know, parking or, you know, I know we have an ordinance where it allows them to park in their, in front of their house, but they have cement, correct?
If it's improved, it could be groveled as well.
But there's houses that have that close to schools that aren't, that, that don't have that, so um maybe a little bit more uh and in-depth, you know, on those issues. Uh, because again, if we want new people to come and go to our schools, the first thing we don't want them to see is trash, a bunch of trash in front of the front lawn and in the, the driveway. But thank you for the presentation.
Mayor, if I may, address the concern that you just discussed about the trash bags. The challenge with that is a deceased owner. Transfer of ownership was never done. Prior to him passing, nobody has legal ownership to the property. I can report on that specific one. It was recently either rented or bought by someone and they have begun the cleanup process.
We could tell not to put in the front lawn.
Mayor, also, um, I'd like to also let council know that all of you are like an expanded eyes and ears for staff. So we always, always encourage, uh, as you drive through your words that you, uh, let us know. We've also established in the, I would say in the last year, an email for um concerns@DouglasAZ.gov where we encourage it is on our website for um concerns from our community to be sent that way so that we can help better track. Our employees are out there, but as you heard, Ms. Gonzalez, we have two point five, uh, sometimes less. Uh, actually, the point five is, is on the lesser side. But um as we drive around, our, our blight is real. Our blight is expans- expansive. And the image is very important for all of us, so I appreciate all of you who send a text, send a photo. Uh, and we, we get out there and do the best we can. Sometimes we do have very specific challenges where we don't have the authority to go into private property, uh, but we, we continue to um to try and accomplish, you know, the, find solutions together. So I thank you and I appreciate that. You all are expanded eyes and ears for us out there.
Thank you and thank you, Ms. Gonzalez, because apparently your staff's been keeping busy with those stats, so thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to, um, I caught something that you said and I've been um saying this for a few years now. Something about maybe getting more staff. But I do think that that is basically what, what, what this problem is going to need. Because if you shift the staff, the limited staff that's working on the, the alleyways and then now we're trying to focus on the front yards, um, something's gonna give. So, you know, they can only focus on so many areas too. And obviously, if we could all be good citizens and take care of our alleyways, we wouldn't have this conversation, but um, you know, we still need to address those. And so if we take one focus from our people for a focus to shift it to another, we're still gonna have those um problems. So I like what you said about getting more people.
Yes, I'd just like to close by saying that we recently revamped our webpage on the city website for development services. Our videos are posted on there. It's got a interactive, um, you can click on buttons and it'll take you straight to links. And so I gotta give kudos to the staff that worked on that. Um, Yasmin, our she knows a little bit about everything. She's great with graphics, so she, she went in and revamped our, our webpage. So it's all available for the public to see.
Thank you. And good discussion once we all have town hall slash, you know, meetups there because we're probably gonna get citizens uh complaining about those things. So thank you. Item twelve, city manager reports. Mrs. Arquijo?
Yes, thank you. And I did it on, we have a great team. We're always, always so appreciative of everything that all of our departments do, day in and day out. Uh, some of this is repetitive from your reports, but I'm going to jump in with our Douglas Commercial Land Port of Entry groundbreaking event. Uh, yes, absolutely very successful, managed not only a major pivot uh with a venue change, but also the last minute change in our program with our governor and one of our senators uh canceling due to the weather and travel. I want to recognize that staff though, uh, as was mentioned before, across all of the, all of our departments for their extraordinary contribution uh to their community by going above and beyond and making this event shine bright for not only our community, but for the entire nation and bi-nationally as well. So we are planning a special recognition for our staff. We will be calling it a Douglas in Motion Celebration for our team and a date to be determined for them. Uh, the uh event did have bi-national press coverage through networks on both sides of the border. And Douglas made a positive and important impact on September fifth with over two hundred dignitaries in attendance from all levels of government, along with key project stakeholders. Uh, we still have our work cut out for us as a team and uh with our stakeholders and partners as we uh continue to work on the utility corridor funding and our partnership with A dot four, the Connector Road, as we continue to build that. I did attend a meeting earlier today on the Connector Road. The design engineering is almost complete at sixty percent. September nineteenth is when that's due. And uh things are just moving along greatly there and we expect that uh to be fully funded with uh congressional directed spending requests. It's still not final, but it's moving along well. So congratulations to all of you on a major step forward for Douglas. The downtown streetscape project, uh one hundred percent construction documents have been submitted and we're ready to roll on publishing a bid and we hope to get that published by this week. And the bid award to come to council during an October meeting. It may be a special meeting in October, but we're moving that along. As we move through these steps, we'll provide an update on timelines and dates. Uh, the project is anticipated to be an eight-to-ten-month project from start to finish. Very excited to uh repeat again that we have a new Ross in the community or we'll have a grand opening in October. October eleventh, eight forty-five AM is the official ribbon cutting ceremony and the public is invited to attend. An update on the West Nile virus update through Cochise County. Uh, we did meet with them yesterday. Cochise County Health and Social Services provided information that mosquito testing that mosquito testing conducted for the week of August thirty first through September sixth showed negative results for mosquito borne viruses, including West Nile, St. Louis encephalitis and Dengue virus. Thank you to all of our city crews working on the mitigation plan that we quickly threw together when we were first advised. We have three departments collaborating with efforts to get out there looking for standing water. We put on our website a very special featured page that encourages the community to also be expanded, eyes and ears to call in any standing water puddles that maybe we missed. And that's the only way we can get out there. Until the cooler weather takes over, we need this to be a community effort and more updates will be shared as they become available. But so far, good news. Our CDBG project, the community will be seeing curb and gutter and sidewalks on Fifteenth Street side. Fifteenth Street from Washington to Airport Road. Very excited about that addition pro- additional project. We are still working on design plans and we still have some work to do on engineering. But I just want to make sure that the community knows that that is a CDBG project and it will help enhance all of the walkers and connection from our neighborhoods and to our parks, as has been one of Mayor and Council's items under their vision. Also, our new well, number eighteen, which is on Fifteenth Street. I know that you've also seen equipment out there. They are at the level of pump testing with pipe from Fifteenth Street down to A Avenue to the storm sewer. That will start September twenty second. They will be laying pipe, temporary pipe, so that the water's not flushing down the street and they'll direct it into the storm sewer. And you will notice some of that activity beginning this, the twenty second. It'll be on the sidewalk on the north side of Fifteenth Street to be closed between Estrella and A Avenue for about seven days. Also, on the asphalt plant, all of the components from Aztec have arrived and are at the site. Work is underway to construct the footings needed for the plant. New gas and electric service has been processed. The process has been started for the applications for that. And the flatbed truck has arrived for the new striping machine and being mounted and staff is training, actually was training today on that. And also the annexation that we recently successfully completed on Twentieth and Twenty Third Street, that becomes effective this Friday, September twelfth. The city will begin providing fire and police services immediately. Garbage pickup for the area will begin on September twenty second. And the city will be grading grading and adding millings to Twentieth Street as a temporary fix. We will do more permanent improvements after the sewer line is installed and we will begin the design of the sewer line this year. We will continue to get information out to those residents ongoing. Also, announcements for our fire department, the twenty fourth anniversary of nine eleven remembrance ceremony this Thursday, September eleventh at nine AM at the fire department. The community is invited to attend. Another kudos again. Congratulations for our library team, as was mentioned. They were number one for customer service and number one as a nonprofit in the Best of Douglas Annual Cochise County Awards. So very happy for them. And we we praise them for all of their hard work. We also have some meetings coming up. They always are on our agenda, but Design Review Board will be September eleventh, six PM here in the council chamber and Planning and Zoning Commission, September fifteenth, six PM, also in the council chamber. And again, I know we had Mr. Dominic Curran introduce himself as golf superintendent. We're just so pleased to have him and his expertise on board. He absolutely hit the ground running at our recent ninetieth Labor Day tournament. I got praises from community members on what he's been able to accomplish in such a short time. And I understand that even through our constituency out there from golfers, he received a standing ovation during that event. So I want to also give him an extra pat on the back for his amazing work in such a short time already. Those are my reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully ribbon cutting for the asphalt plant, ribbon cutting for the for the golf course, everything. Let's celebrate everything. Thank you to our staff and city manager. Item thirteen, future agenda item request for mayor and council. Do we have any? Item fourteen, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mayor Protemp. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protemp, second by Councilmember Montano. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, ayes have it. We adjourn at seven oh four PM.
Have a good evening, Dennis. Thank you.
All right, everybody. Have a nice evening.